So we're gonna do call to order and start the meeting. And we're gonna start off with roll call.
Mayor Boren.
Here.
Councilmember Perry.
Here.
Councilmember Caffey.
Here.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
Councilmember Oliveris.
Here.
Councilmember Starnes. Councilmember Melton.
Here.
Okay, let's do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We got any citizens communication? All right, Mr. Mante, since there's only two of y'all, I'll give y'all five minutes apiece. Instead of the regular four.
Want me to get started now? I am here today because the city manager is a liar, and the city council continues to enable her. Her actions have proven again and again that she is a liar, a bully, and has no regard for the law or the people of Rockdale. The city council is well aware of this. Each of you has received Barbara Holly's emails, text messages, and her fabricated documents, documents that prove that she knowingly tried to steal land from citizens of Rockdale. I am here today because y'all have remained silent as the city manager walks all over the people of Rockdale. I am here today because she is about to suggest to y'all to cut $150,000 check to a private family just on her say-so. And she expects y'all to do this without addressing one of her lies or any of her abuses of power and disregard and any of the abuses of power and discretion that she has within her office. She is not trustworthy. She has proven not to look out for the best interest of this town. She has proven to ignore direct instructions from some of our city council members. This isn't news to any of you. The council has been presented with multiple ethics complaints against her, not just from me. And y'all have elected to ignore the voters and people of Rockdale. My own experiences I have shared with y'all, Barbara Holly's lies, her emails from March and April, where she claimed that her and her staff created a list of properties around town that were owned by the city and zoned residential. She allegedly put that list in this binder. That was on Wednesday when she told me that she created this list that was "city-owned, residentially-zoned lots." That was on a Wednesday she said that in an email. The following Monday, she admitted that the city does not own residential lots and hasn't for 20 years. Again, this is not news to any of you. I even walked our newest member of council, Mr. Melton, through these details just so everyone was up to speed. The facts are clear. Barbara Holly either lied when she put this book in my hand. I'm be happy to walk you through every last detail of it. Be more than happy to walk you through this book of binders that allegedly contains "city-owned, residentially-zoned lots." She either lied when she put this in my hands or she lied in her series of emails. Both cannot be true. And y'all knew it. If you didn't, you do now. The city council has been made fully aware of Barbara Holly's abuses of power and abuses of the discretion of her office. The council has stated that they can't afford to replace her. But can they afford the $150,000 she's about to request from y'all? The city has asked for transparency. The people can't of this town can't always make a 5:30 meeting. They work, they have kids. This is a working-class community. But just because people can't be here does not mean they don't care, and it damn sure it does not mean that they are not watching. The last city council meeting was very well attended, as was the one before that. And even more people are watching the videos online. People want to know what y'all are doing. They want to know who's making the decisions. They want to know, who are you listening to? And what are you continuing to ignore? Are you going to ignore the fact that this binder is not filled with a single residentially-zoned lot, even though she swore up and down that that's what this is filled with? Are you going to ignore that she said, "We haven't owned those kinds of lots for 20 years, but here's a book full of them"? Y'all gonna continue to ignore that, but the people of this town will not. That's all I have to say.
Okay, now the time is 5:37. Next person, Ms. Bell.
With only a few minutes, I want to lay some groundwork for, I'm sorry, for another day and have this typed out to stay on track. Most of you know me, I'm Brittany Bell. On May 9th, the city drafted me a letter that I never received. And yesterday, the water to my home, where I live with my husband and children, was shut off. I contacted City Hall, and when asked to speak with Teresa, I was transferred to Barbara Holly. She said that calls from me were to immediately go to her only. Barbara told me the reason my water was shut off and would not be turned back on was because of a sewage leak. I could have a plumber pull a permit to have my water turned back on, but it had to be pulled by the end of business today to keep it on. My plumber explained to her he does not need one for this. When asked why I was given zero notice about the shut-off, Barbara told me a letter was sent via certified mail. I asked why not standard along also, because in previous correspondence with them, just one the day before where I received a standard letter as well certified, was sent that way. I asked why not standard also, and she said that that's how they did it. I requested a copy of the letter yesterday and been provided it, and I made a copy for each of you. The first sentence of this letter states, "Recent complaints from neighboring properties have alerted the city to a sewage leak in my yard." I knew this was not true, and I told Barbara that it was Donnie Buchanan who had sewage issues with the city also and was trying to get the ball rolling with mine. She stated to me it was him. To me, the letter that y'all are about to read admits the city took hearsay from a non-licensed plumber that in turn led to my water being shut off without an actual inspection of my yard. This is absurd because in months prior, the city told me that I only had stagnant water, not sewage, the city being Barbara Holly as well as Mr. Gerald Brunson. For a brief timeline, when all of this began, I started correspondence with Councilman Walker, who has been attentive and helpful, and Councilman Oliveris, who was very concerned about this. April of 2022, I provided the city with texts from my plumber, who believed the break was where the city and I connect. October 10th, I notified Ben Blanchard and Barbara Holly Terry Buchanan was complaining about sewage. October 17th, Barbara stated they wanted to scope my line with the camera, but their equipment was broken. I offered to purchase one and donate it to the city, but Barbara declined. Fast forward to yesterday, Barbara said, "I never requested this scope, but I had no other way to know your equipment was broken." October 18th, I emailed the city again and commended Mr. Monolongo's demeanor. But Gerald, in my opinion, was rude, arrogant, hateful to me, and attempted to belittle me as well as our local plumbers. He bet me $500 that I had root damage, and my plumbers didn't want to deal with it. I have him, I have home video and audio of this exchange. What is most alarming is on October 18th, Mr. Monolongo stated he smelled sewage at my residence. Again, months prior to this, the city stated it was stagnant water. Now, in this letter, they state this is a public health issue and requires urgent action. October 22nd, I paid a plumber to camera my property. I did not have root damage, and I have yet to receive my $500 from Gerald Brunson. During my conversation with Barbara yesterday, I conferenced in one plumber who had been to my residence, as well as one plumbing receptionist so Barbara could hear our conversation. Today, I'm here because, why is this a health emergency on May 9th, 2023, but not in 2022? Or even 2021, when my correspondence with y'all started? I believe this is retaliation from Barbara Holly because I have never been silent on her shortcomings or her bullying tactics with our citizens. To date, I have spent over $20,000 on plumbing in my home, which has been financially stressful for my family. Barbara, however, told me yesterday she heard rumors that my plumbing wasn't fixed because I couldn't afford it. This was one of her numerous rude comments from yesterday. I've been told Rockdale is one of the very few towns who still go by customers responsible for everything from their property to the city main. That's great, that would make it my problem. And as I've told Councilman Walker and Oliveris, I would love for it to be my problem so I can fix it. However, this is a city problem. Today, I had a plumber come out for six hours on an emergency, according to Barbara Holly, and billed me $300 an hour worth of plumbing work. He said, "My sewage line is wonderful," and this is on the city side. This is now our second camera recording of this. He said he would not even dig it up to show y'all because the city could come back on him for that. He also explained this to Barbara, who told him that that was untrue. I'm not okay with this, and I'm not okay with having the city of Rockdale work against me and treat me worse than I would treat another human. Councilmembers, you have been taken, you have citizens being taken advantage of. And you have citizens who don't know their rights, therefore, they have none. You have citizens who are sick and tired of coming to y'all because y'all have given Barbara Holly the keys to this kingdom. And my suggestion is that you please help us. I expect full retaliation from Barbara in regards to this. To Mayor Boren, Councilwoman Perry, Councilmember Caffey, Councilmember Walker, and Councilmember Melton, thank you each for being good humans and standing up for what is right. If you're interested in hearing any of the recordings between your city staff and I, please contact me. I'm gonna leave each of you with what I shared with Barbara, who I believe acts in bad faith and out of the scope of her position. I can handle bullying, belittling, and I will not back down from her. But there are citizens of Rockdale who cannot mentally, emotionally, or financially afford to fight this or her. I will continue to advocate for them. Thank you.
I don't, I know we, I know you can address these issues, but I have some facts that I'd like to share because there's no reason for this kind of abuse.
You can, you can take a factual response.
I'm gonna talk whether he says I can or not until you.
Gerald, it's up, it's up to the mayor.
I've been libeled and called names, and I'm not gonna listen to it. Is it okay, Mayor, that I speak?
It is if it's factual. You can't do a dialogue.
That's all I'm gonna do is factual.
Communication, but you can take factual information.
Okay, so let's first start with the Moore property. Y'all, my name's Gerald Brunson. I'm the Public Works Director for the city of Rockdale. And you know the situation with the Moore property. And that goes without saying that everyone is aware of that. Everyone knows what's being spent, why it's being spent, how it's being spent. And we're gonna hopefully give the contract out tonight. Everything else that was spoken to about all those points, and I don't know about the property, are not true. Absolutely falsehoods. Number one, I found out about the problem at Brittany Bell's yard in October 18th of last year. And I was asked to go over and look at it. I went over and looked at it. There is a big hole beside a tree filled with sewage. You could smell it. I talked to her. I came back, we talked some more. I told her, I said, "I would bet you've got clay lines, and I would be willing to bet $500," which she didn't accept at the time, "that you have roots." And there's another tree just up from that, 40-foot trees, there's probably roots in that line. And I told her, I said, "We can't do anything because it's 50 feet from the main." I'm not gonna say that there isn't a blockage at the main, but if it is, once again, it's from broken clay pipe that has fallen down and continued to move forward. It gets cleaned out whenever somebody runs a snake through it, pulls all the paper and toilet paper and stuff, gets it off, and it runs again for a while until it gets caught back up. This is what I turned in that day when I, after I went in there. The sewer service line has no clean-out, and the break in the line is very close to the base of a large tree. There is also another large tree in the service line path to get to the main. The break is approximately 40 feet from the tap, which is in the alley behind the house. We had, there is a picture of that in our computer with our ENCODE work order. I took a picture of it. The customer acknowledges that the plumbing for this property is or was clay pipe. The customer also said that the leak has been there for at least 15 years when her grandmother owned the property. Based on past experience, the clay pipe has been breached by roots and is probably filled by now. There is nothing the city can do to resolve this except to turn off the water. And that was in October. And she, after that, said, "I'm gonna have somebody come from College Station, and I will get that videoed." And I waited, and she said, "I'll give it to you as soon as we get it." And this was like middle of the week. We waited till the next week, never came. Up to date, it's still never come. Yesterday, we talked to her. She said she has put in four clean-outs. We took pictures. There are no clean-outs in the yard for, for us to help to see if there's a blockage in the connection from her line. We've done everything we can. And then finally, it got to the point when a next-door neighbor behind her, the clinic, put in a request for us to check on a smell that we went back over there, and it's building up again in the same spot. And so we had to make, it becomes a health department issue. And so we decided that the thing to do was to tell her, "Look, you gotta get this fixed." I've talked to the plumbers that have been over there. They say it's clay pipe. They say that she needs to have it replaced. And those are the facts as they stand completely. Was never anything said to her out of the way of, other than, "This is a private problem, and you need to address it." Okay? Yes, sir.
Is that her?
No.
Mr.?
The break is in the large, is near a large.
So this is where we can't head back.
Okay.
We cannot head back and forth. That's what the law does not allow.
But the law, the law allow factual basis?
Only factual, right?
I don't have the rights to know what the plumbers said then.
40 feet from, in the alley, 40 feet from the tap. Does that sound like? Are questions?
We found that you can.
Yes. And she says, "Let's make a motion, let's do it."
I make a motion, we go into executive session.
Second.
With an attorney?
Is that pursuant by Title V, Chapter 551?
We would have to do either for property to deal with, to talk with an attorney?
We can call the attorney.
Okay, we'll have to go call the attorney, okay.
Wait, we gotta vote.
All in motion. All in favor, I'm sorry. Motion carries. All right, the time now is 6:25. We're gonna reconvene into open session. And we're gonna move along to item number five, action items. A, consider and take any necessary action on ratifying the water line contract to DNS Contracting, Inc. of College Station for $148,540 for the Moore property address.
So we've received the bids back in, we opened bids on May 16th, and we got five people who have bid to repair the leaking sewer line that is a city line that runs through the Moore property. The engineer's opinion of probable cost was $175, and we have got a bid in from DNS Contracting for $148,540. So we're within what they thought would be the regular prices. We've already purchased all of the material except for, I believe, two manholes, correct? Okay, and so if the council approves this, then they have been notified that they are the low bidder, but we have not done a notice to proceed, and we have not awarded the contract. But if you're good with this, this will put that leaking sewer line to bed, and we will be paying DNS contractors or contracting to do the work on the city sewer line.
This money's not going to the Moore family.
No, it is not. This is going to repair sewer line.
The two manholes that have not been purchased are not gonna be in part of the scope anyway. Is that correct? We're going to the property of the Moore?
No, they are. It's one that's on the dividing line and one that's further up in the trees.
And there's one that's been a pasture for 75 years, and it's totally falling apart. And that's gonna be replaced. And then the other one, is that the property? We were not originally gonna put it on his property. It was gonna be on the next-door property. But the redesign puts it there. It's gonna be a doghouse, and so that they can work around it and pump to it while we're fixing the rest of the line. And then they'll pour the base on it once they get all that work done.
Is that, that's what we talked about?
Yes, sir.
When Mr. Moore is aware of that second?
Yes.
Manhole. Okay. DNS, you're comfortable with that? I don't know, I've never heard of them.
I don't know them, but the engineers have gone out and done their reference checks and made sure everything was good with them. And just as a bit of history, this project was actually approved in 2022. It came under your projects as wastewater line A. And that was funded through ARPA, the American Recovery Plan Act. Those funds are still available to fund this, and that's what is gonna fix the leaking sewer line.
I'll see when they start.
It probably will be mid-June because they'll have contract documents. They go back and forth, and we'll do a notice to proceed. So it's probably be in about two weeks. They'll also be using the construction entrance that's off of the driveway of the Moore property.
Not the one that goes through their?
Right, not, not the one that goes through their house.
It's been, but it is a full farm gate. Please, so that they can use it or not use it in the future.
And that's our, gonna be our access for maintaining this line in the future for our easement.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid from DNS Contracting to repair the Moore property sewer line.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Motion carries, 5-0.
The funds that we had originally set aside are still what we're using to?
Yes, sir.
From?
Yes, it's still ARPA funding, yes, sir.
So no budget amendment needed for that?
No, sir, you did that back when you did this, or we established that back when you initially approved this project.
Okay, item number six, workshop. A, conduct a workshop regarding the new industrial park.
All right. How are we all, oh, you have that clear? Let's see. All right. So we've got a lot to talk about. It's gonna be kinda like drinking from a fire hose a bit, so I'll try to make this as short, painless, and understandable as you can. If y'all have any questions while we're going through this, just please jump in. So today, yes, we are gonna, there's really two things we're gonna talk about on the agenda for today. The first is industrial recruitment, industrial park stuff, kind of all things industrial. And then the second thing we're going to discuss is a proposed concept for a way to help pay for certain improvements downtown and along the East Cameron Avenue corridor. So jumping into the industrial stuff first, little bit of background, kinda where we are and why we're here. We did have, the city and the MDD had this 166-acre property on FM 487. That was the old industrial park. And as y'all remember, we sold that. We closed on that last December. And, but, the city still needs industrial value. I think one of the things that we talked about, really, it was about a year ago, was, okay, if we sell the industrial park, what are we gonna do for a new industrial park? Well, we have one. We have a solution that we're gonna talk about. But the city still needs industrial value. And this kinda brings up like a tax policy question of who pays? Right now, if you look at the, I haven't seen this year's city's tax base information, the tax, the tax roll. In the past, close to 70% of the city's taxable value has been from residential property. So the burden of paying for city services falls very squarely onto the shoulders of residents. There's not a lot of other development to balance that out. And so we need to try to fix that and try to get a little more value added on the tax roll so we can lessen the tax burden on everybody. And just as a, as a reminder, or as a plug, we are having a groundbreaking for the new subdivision. I was about to say industrial park. The new subdivision on Wednesday, June 21st, at 8:30. You're all invited. We have hard hats and construction vests. All right, so some more background. After we knew we were gonna sell the FM 487 property, we started looking around for other candidate sites for a new industrial park. Thought we had one, it didn't work out. We moved on to the next one. And then we find this 270-acre tract owned by 4J Energy. And you'll see a picture of it here in just a moment. But this is a superior site to the old industrial park. This is at the intersection of Highway 77 and 79. It's a larger piece of property. And it's just kind of, access is better and all that. So it's all good. We signed this agreement with 4J in September of last year. A copy is in that binder under the tab Agreement. I don't, don't look at it right now, but you can take, take it back and study it later. Out of this agreement, the MDD said, "We're gonna pay for Phase 1 environmental assessment. We're gonna pay for a wetlands delineation, endangered species, the archaeological-cultural resources assessment." Those are the four main critical items that a piece of property is going to need to reduce risk so that it can move forward with development. Otherwise, you just have a cow pasture. Now, you might kinda think, "All right, well, why are you spending the money on that?" The reduction of risk is very, very important because you don't, nobody's gonna put their, their capital up if they don't know anything about a piece of property. So you don't know if there was an Indian burial ground on, on top of a hill, or if Uncle Bob used to change his diesel oil and just dump it out on the ground, or if some yellow-bellied salamander who's on the endangered species list has his habitat there. All of those things are basically deal killers for a piece of property. And one, you might be able to get over with, but all three, basically, the land is undevelopable. You can't do anything with it. So we have to figure that stuff out on the front end. In this agreement, we also said we're gonna do a drainage analysis, a utility assessment to figure out how we're gonna drag infrastructure over, highway access from one or both of the US highways, a conceptual layout, which you will see here in just a moment, and some virtual spec buildings, which is just a fancy way to say pretty pictures of buildings that can be sighted on, on the property. So the MDD fully paid for this study. We're in the process of it. It should be completed in just a matter of weeks. And we were, we are not expecting to get repaid from Four J Energy out of this. So we're going to pay for the study, and we're also agreeing to market the property. We're not pushing the marketing of this property really hard right now. Really, it's just a matter of if we get a prospect lead out of the governor's office, we send this property in. If somebody calls the office and says, hey, I'm looking for an industrial site, we, we, we submit this property, even though it's a little premature to do that. On Four J, on Four J's part, they're agreeing to put the property up. So they're saying, yes, you can use our property for this purpose. They are also agreeing to consider a sale. That does not mean we're going to make them sale or condemn it or do any adverse procedures like that. But it's just a matter of, in my experience, I'm sure you've seen it. Somebody approaches the property owner and property owner says, yeah, I'm not selling to you. I don't like you. But then they'll sell it to somebody else over here. Or the property owner will say, well, if I do sell it to you, I'm selling it to you at this price. But I'll sell it to my buddy at a different price. So we're avoiding all of that. In that agreement that you have, you kind of got to hunt around for it. But there's a not to exceed purchase price for the whole tract. And this is it. This is the pretty picture. So here you have Highway seventy-nine. Here you have Highway seventy-seven. This is at the intersection. This is the Gulf Mex facility that's owned by Four J, and here's the Highway seventy-seven access right there. Over here on the seventy-nine side, um, there is a little driveway right there. And I don't know how far this is, but that's a pretty long stretch, if you notice it. Yeah, yeah, you can see Harvest Bible Church and the, not in the KC Hall. Right there. There is a small cemetery. I think it's Saint Joseph Cemetery that is in the middle of the property. And we're just having to work around that. So, um, so we just adjust accordingly. Okay, so I'd like to pause here for a second, switch gears a little bit, and now talk to you all about this concept of industrial districts. So the law says, Section forty-two of the Texas Government Code, local government code, says that a city can create these things called industrial districts. And this is, this is very new. So this is a very new concept that I'm asking you all to consider because, you know, you'll probably be given a draft industrial district agreement soon to vote on. So that's why we're talking about this now. Industrial districts are used in, uh, you see them more along the coast, um, like in Houston, Corpus Christi, things like that. At a very high level, what these districts do is they guarantee that a city will not annex the property. So there are some rights or some guarantees that the city makes to someone in this district. On the other, on the other side of the ledger, the company or the person, the, the other party for a industrial district agreement agrees to pay the city a certain payment based on a certain schedule for certain things. So we'll talk about that in just a moment. So the council designates the property as an industrial district in the ETJ. And this industrial district basically gets treated just like it's inside the city. But instead of paying taxes, they make these payments in lieu of taxes. So what could the terms possibly look like for an industrial district agreement? Well, these are very, very long agreements. Uh, I don't want to say they go to perpetuity or in perpetuity, but they are very long. Not usually. State law says that tax abatements, if a property is inside the city and you're doing a tax abatement, state law says those can only be for ten years, and then it's done. You cannot extend it any further. These, you can extend it as long as you want, twenty, thirty, fifty years. I don't know. I don't know what the record is for the longest industrial district agreement. That'd be interesting to find that out. So the industrial district receives city services just like it's inside the city. And that's part of the terms of this industrial district agreement. So they get police and fire protection. I've been at a couple of cities where we've, we've passed an ordinance and authorized staff to send out invoices for emergency responses that happen outside the city limits or if it's for a non-city resident. The reasoning is if the fire department has to go out to your house and you're outside the cities and you're out in the county or whatever, well, you're using city resources to pay for something that a non-taxpayer gets a benefit of. Okay? You can invoice for that. I'm not saying you should. I've never really seen it work very well. But you could bill if there's a plant explosion or something like that out in an industrial district. This says you're not going to bill. They would also get to, uh, get the benefit of the city's ISO rating. I don't know if the city's ISO rating is a four or a five, but it's a lot better than what's out in the county. Usually those are run about a nine or a ten. They get city garbage services from the city's contract. They get utility extensions and they get utility service at in-city rates. And these are all just parts, terms of the agreement between the city and anybody out there. And then in return, they're going to pay a pilot. So how do we calculate the pilot? Well, this is kind of in small print over here. But basically, you take the appraised value of whatever's out there. You, you divide it by a hundred times the, whatever the city's current tax rate is, and then you reduce it by whatever the pilot percentage is, then that's how much they're invoiced every year. So some examples, or an example, is year one through five, when we start out, the company pays fifty-five percent of whatever the taxes would be, and the city gets forty-five percent of that. No. But, it's been a long day, folks. But you, but you get the idea. And so they're, they're paying a reduced tax bill. And so in years six through ten, they goes up, uh, yeah, they're, they're going to pay a higher percentage. As we advance down the terms, uh, or through the life of the agreement, they're, they're paying more. And so, uh, there's that. All right. So to really get down to this, and, and after we get to this, then we'll kind of pause for questions. The advantage to the city, all right, sorry, there are advantages to the city for this. There's, there are advantages to the company for this. There's really only one minor disadvantage that I can see, but the, the main advantage is this one right here. Any pilot payment that the city gets does not count towards your no new revenue tax rate calculation. So a pilot payment or a stream of pilot payments would be, first off, another revenue stream for the city. And it would not have any restrictions that like property tax comes with or, or anything like that. So I don't want to say it would be like free money, but it would be another revenue stream that's unrestricted. And these can kind of be anywhere out in the ETJ, so you could kind of drop one wherever you want to. It's flexible on that. Disadvantage to the city, the city limits in the ETJ do not get to expand or grow with these industrial districts. So the city limits, the actual city limit boundaries are unaltered. Advantage to the company, well, as we saw in the previous slide, uh, a company that goes out into an industrial district gets to get a very long, uh, property tax break. So not just ten years for a traditional tax abatement, but much, much longer than that. So they are treated just like they are inside the city. There's no building permit or inspection fees that the city charges. So it's cheaper for them to build out in a, in, in industrial district as opposed to inside the city. And they can develop faster because the city doesn't permit it. Then they're not having to wait for the city to approve a building permit or a development permit. So with that, we'll pause and see if there's, if y'all have any questions. The city would govern it, and then the terms of the agreement.
No, who governs the building inspections that could sell while, while Wes up there?
This, just state law, state or federal law. So, you know, they're, they're going to have to build so they can get insurance, right?
You might expect this question from me, but would we have any influence or is there any way to impact the facade or the look of these facilities? Because that is right as you drive into town, and is it going to be just a metal bunch of, you know, aluminum cans?
So there's a couple of different ways to, to, to address that. The first one is just from a development perspective that if I'm a developer and I've got a piece of property and I want it to be filled up and use its highest and best use, I'm not going to put some kind of, you know, junky-looking stuff out there because then that'll scare away anybody else. As we've talked to the owner, Four J, they want to do something nice. And so from a competitive standpoint, it's in their interest to make it, you know, look nice. And, and even from a legal perspective, and Barbara can speak much, much better about this than me, state law doesn't allow the city to regulate like, uh?
Any facade.
Yeah, building materials or anything like that. So yes and no.
Well, the city limits, you said the disadvantage of the city, it can expand, the city limits of ETJ. It can expand all around. It just can't consume that particular piece of property if they were to decide to hand it in.
That's right. Um, if something just really crazy happens and the deer farm over here decides he's going to sell and put in some big, you know, twenty thousand house master plan, community, whatever. Right. Then yes, uh, there's nothing to prevent annexing around it. It's just that by virtue of doing this, it doesn't push out the ETJ further.
Will the railroad give him a, uh, give Four J a crossing there?
Uh, they will have to go through the railroad to do the crossing. I thought you, my snicker was about a spur. That, that we've already talked to them about that, and they politely kind of said, sure, we'll do you a spur, but it's gonna, yeah.
Of course, there's access on seventy-seven as well. I'm sure they'll have them on both sides.
Yeah, and, and we're actually thinking that access off of seventy-seven is going to be the, the more used access for, for a couple of different reasons, railroad being one of them.
It doesn't, it doesn't go all the way to three twenty-six, though, doesn't it?
No, no, no. Okay.
I'm not being contrarian.
Go ahead.
At least I hope. Um, but I, I do think that this look, you know, if we're going to be having population growth that's been projected with the new housing subdivision, you'd like to think that there are going to be some chain restaurants that would like prime real estate like this that would be much more attractive as anybody's driving through and businesses that they might stop in and, and get a meal or whatnot. I just, I?
So we'll, we're going to beat through questions like that as we're doing the future land use planning with the new comp plan. I really doubt you're going to see a lot of like commercial stuff go right through here just because of access and you've got the railroad. I have no idea what's going to go right here. But when, when I show you the, uh, conceptual site layout here in a second, I think you'll get a better feel for, for kind of how it's going to look. But I know the, this map doesn't show it, but if you were to really ask me, I would say kind of further up seventy-seven is probably where eventually you'll see more of that commercial, big box, strip center, power center development. I don't, I don't think you're going to see it right here.
Uh, David, there's a lot of, um, water. There's a huge lake on this property. You can see it right there. And what's already existing on this property is industrial. And then a lot, it's, it's just, there's another piece of this that goes off to the bridge line too that Four J owns. But all these are just pins, deer pins. With big South Texas deer. And it just, it goes all the way back. But that whole front side is already industrial.
Right. He's talking about this. This is Gulf Mex right there.
And it's bigger than it looks on that map.
Okay.
In this agreement, you said there's a purchase agreement that is to the, to the city or to the MDD?
There's a not to exceed price that he's agreed to. So that just means that if, I mean, if we want to buy it, which we don't, uh, or if someone else wishes to buy it, which we hope, as they're negotiating, the price can't be higher than whatever's in the agreement. And he could set that however he wants. We, we didn't have any influence on that.
I have no idea what that price is, but the, the, the property isn't necessarily for sale for that price. It's just if he decided to sell it, he couldn't sell it for more than that.
Right.
He didn't have to sell it at all, ever.
Right.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, go ahead.
And, and utilities, at what point do utilities become an obligation to the city?
Well, we're getting to that, but I'll go ahead and, uh, tell you. So there is, uh, again, you can't really see it on the map, but Belton Street is about right here. And there's an eight-inch water line somewhere over here. As the crow flies, it's not that far. But whenever you have to go down, under the highway and the railroad, over, and then back down, it's close to a mile. There's a six, so over here at the very, very corner, that's the East Cameron lift station. And approximately right there is a six-inch water line. And the idea is to bring the six inch over and down and the eight inch down and over so that there's a, a water line to the site. We're talking about putting in a big elevated water tower about right here because that's the high point of the property. A lift station would go about right here because that's kind of the low part of the property. The property has a ridge to it, and the ridge kind of runs kind of like, like, like so. And so it just sort of splits off. So anybody who's going to be a user on this side, they're going to flow to that lift station. We expect the west side of the property to develop first. And then as we get more momentum and stuff like that, then we'll start to push out this way. And there's a low spot about right here. And then eventually this lift station will pump to that lift station, and this lift station will go up and over, and it'll pump to that lift station, and then Gerald takes it from there. Right. Okay. So, um, now that we kind of understand the concept of industrial districts, now we can get into more of the meat and potatoes of this. Uh, well, actually, I'll come back to that. So advancing the project, so right now we have this agreement with Four J where we're going to pay to document the property. That should be done in a couple of weeks. Four J is, and this is pretty cool, but this property is an old rail, uh, sorry, coal mine from like a hundred years ago, and it's been abandoned for, forever. And, um, as, when Four J bought the property, they applied to the railroad commission's abandon mine reclamation program or whatever. And so Four J finds out just a few months ago, hey, your property is now in the queue to get reclaimed. And so the railroad commission's going to come in and they're going to clear out probably seventy, eighty acres or so and fill in all these divots and, you know, sinkholes and whatever. Bring the parts of the property, not all the property, but parts of the property to grade. They're going to put in, uh, what do you call it? The, uh, heavy all-weather roads throughout the property so they can bring, uh, dump trucks in. And, uh, all that's going to be for free. So state's paying for that. Your tax dollars at work. So that should be done by around Christmas. This should be done in a couple of weeks. This should be completely done, we'll say, by Christmas. The next step is going to be to do final engineering, surveying, get the construction docs ready for all the infrastructure going to the property line. So that's going to be the, the two water lines that we talked about, the big elevated water storage tank, the sewer lift station, the forest main back into town, and the bores under the highway and the railroads. So go ahead and get all the design work done so it's ready to send to a contractor and bid. The next thing is going to be installation of the bores. So get the permit and get the bores done because that's going to take a while. And we want to go ahead and do this on the front end because you get a contract in to start laying down pipe. Now all they have to do is just sleeve it through the bore, and then they keep on going. So we have just eliminated a lot of time and risk in that process. And then also the, creating the industrial district and getting it approved by council. So the MDD board has said that there are two conditions for them to feel comfortable moving forward with this part and this part. That condition number one, Four J Energy has to sign a letter to the city requesting city water and city services. That happened on March the third. A copy of that letter is in your binder. That happened on March the third. A copy of that letter is in your binder. Condition number two, get an industrial district agreement done or close to being done. They do those two things and then the MDD will, uh, work on final design and getting the bores done. And so we are, this first one is done, the second one should be done here very quickly.
Jim, real quick.
Yes.
So, the utilities, the city's just gonna get them up to the property, right?
That's right.
Because I know they own and we don't, uh.
Well, also, and, and this is jumping ahead, but it does answer your question. Also in your binder is a, a tab labeled MOU. That stands for memorandum of understanding. And that, you look on the third page and there's places to sign for the city, 4J and the MDD. Now, we're not gonna do that. I'll tell you why in a second. But what that MOU says is that these are the terms for us moving forward. This is everybody's roles and responsibilities as we are building this park out. The city is gonna do X, Y, Z. The MDD is gonna do A, B, C. And 4J Energy, as the property owner developer, is gonna be responsible for C, D and E. And so that we're all clear on what everybody's gonna do before we, you know, start signing deals, right, and spending money. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I, I just.
Sorry.
Water towers and lift stations are down the road. I was gonna make sure.
Okay. Um, let's see. Okay, so yeah, we just kinda walked through the MOU. So on this MOU, um, I asked Nathan, our, uh, board president, to look it over, uh, which he did. Uh, any comments he had, um, you know, we took care of. I sent the MOU to Barbara, asked her to look it over. She gave her comments and so we got those, uh, put in. Ford, I sent this document to 4J and their attorney and they didn't really have any comments to make so that there wasn't really anything to add to that. But here's what they did do, is they're basically taking the contents of this MOU document and they're folding it into the industrial district agreement. So whenever we approve the industrial district agreement, that's basically when we're, we're all approving the terms of the MOU. So that's kind of answering, get, get your question. Okay. And so ultimately, this is what we're looking at building and creating. So this is the, uh, the conceptual site plan. So this is, uh, again, this is just a pretty picture on paper. Uh, the reality could look very different when it's all said and done. Uh, like we said, we think the, the main access is gonna be off of seventy-seven right here. And this, this main road's gonna kinda wind around, go by the cemetery. And, uh, this'll probably be the first road that gets built because it starts to open up this land right here. So you know, like you get this road built, okay, well now this land becomes something and you could start to put smaller tenants, uh, along this side because you don't have as much space. And so we think kind of this corner right here is gonna be more heavy commercial, very light industrial, small space users, stuff like that. We do want to leave kind of a green buffer along the highway so that anything, regardless of what's in there, you don't see very well. And, um, so yeah, this is kinda what we're looking at. Uh, I haven't added up all the square footage that, uh, can be dropped into here, but it's in the millions of square feet that, that we can do. Now, I'm gonna hop back for a moment and talk about this. So, you know, why is this gonna work? Why do we feel confident that this is a viable, uh, project here? Well, a couple of different reasons. Uh, and these are in no particular order. But the first thing is to complement whatever is gonna go out at SLR. We don't know exactly what those guys are gonna do. We know that they are gonna start doing a lot more industrial stuff, manufacturing stuff first. If you look at their website and you look at their portfolio of different projects that they do, they go big, okay? They have told me, and it's been a while, they don't wanna touch a project unless it's less than, or sorry, greater than two hundred thousand square feet. So there's a niche that this property could serve. It's a project that doesn't want or can't go out to SLR. Hey, we could be a, a good alternative for them. The other one is increased industrial market demand, demand for more industrial space in central Texas. We all know central Texas is hot, folks wanna be over here. And, um, we could be a very viable alternative for the Austin market. We, you know, Samsung's going in and that's gonna be, uh, a total game changer for the region. And they're gonna need to build a brand-new supply chain from scratch. So suppliers could come over here. There's, there's a lot that Rockdale has to offer. We have a lot more water. We have, uh, around seven hundred thousand gallons of water every day that we can sell, or Gerald can sell, without having to drop another well, fix up the, uh, the, the water plant or anything like that. And that's quite a bit of water every day. We are close to Austin, you know, just a little over an hour away. But yet, so, somebody could be close to Austin but not be in Austin and still get the benefits of that proximity by being in Rockdale. We can offer a much longer incentive horizon via the pilot. And folks that may wanna come out here can get speed to market faster because they're not having to wait months and months and months and months on a building permit. You know, you hear these horror stories, uh, in Austin or San Antonio about people been waiting a year just to get a building permit. We don't do that. Okay, so I think that's kind of it. Yes. So any questions on the industrial stuff?
Well, if I build inside there versus on the other side of the highway in the city limits, the advantage is a longer quote-unquote tax abatement ability. Everything else kinda stays the same, is that?
No city code. You don't have to go through the city code.
You don't have to go through the city code.
But the payment would be the best.
Right. I'm sorry.
No limit on that, right?
No link.
No link.
No. It's just what, I mean, y'all, your few, your, um, the folks that follow you may wake up fifty years from now after the, this initial industrial district agreement kinda runs out and they may say, well, well, do it another fifty years or, you know, we won't be around for that.
It's been a long day, huh?
Yeah, it's been a long day.
Jim, just for the viewers out there, I mean, just kinda throw a couple of examples out there for what, you know, industrial, it, it's a bold, strong word, you know, what that means from a small scale to, to maybe a hundred thousand square feet.
Well, I'm not entirely sure I understand your question, but, or is the new Tesla battery plant gonna go right here? No, it's not. I mean, it'd be great, but no, it's not. As I, as I see it, and I think y'all would agree, the city would be much stronger in the long run if we had five fairly large employers that had five, six hundred people working out there as opposed to one employer that had two thousand people. Just my opinion, I think we would, the city would be a lot stronger if, if we did that. And especially if they were in different industries. So like if, um, you know, we did a response to the, uh, a prospect lead a couple of months ago for a food processing plant. They like made chips and crackers and stuff like that. So something like that would fit very well here. So if someone brought in a medical device manufacturer, hired, you know, two hundred people, uh, something like that would go very well here. Project Lightsaber, which we've talked about, you know, uh, before. We're trying to see if they, if we could put them about right here and maybe they would be the first tenant to, to get this, uh, property activated. I, I, I'm sure that doesn't entirely answer your question, but is that kinda?
You know, just a light overhead view, you know, a lot of people don't know what, you know, defines industrial.
Usually it's something manufacturing, um, manufacturing of some sort. Um, and you have heavy manufacturing, then you have light manufacturing. Um, heavy manufacturing could involve the use of like a lot of nasty chemicals and pollution and things like that. I don't think any of us are terribly interested in selling out and, you know, getting like a heavy polluter in town. I do recognize, or we all do recognize that, yes, seven hundred thousand gallons of water a day sounds like a lot, but whenever you count a whole bunch of other growth that comes in, you know, we need to be careful and mindful of that. We, I would not propose that we go after some kind of chicken or pro- poultry processing plant or some dog food plant. Those things stink. And, uh, so, so you don't wanna do anything that's gonna detract from the quality of the community whenever it's all said and done. Again, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah.
Okay.
I like it. I think it's very proactive, a proactive approach as to what is to come. And I think I agree with you as well as having different, um, types of manufacturing. It'll give us diversity in products and also diversity in population. And of course, employment is definitely great, so.
Right.
I think it's great.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
So, have you, you said you don't have a price tag on, on the infrastructure piece until, you've satisfied the two, two parts and then, and then you're gonna go out for engineering and, and, and pricing?
Right.
Is, is Southwest Mylum an option for water?
Not an economical option. Southwest Mylum has a, it's either a four-inch line or a two-inch line of, along seventy-seven. I think they have a, they may have a small line, uh, down seventy-nine, but I know they have one on seventy-seven. Southwest Mylum, uh, we, you know, the idea is with this letter and once we advance the project, you know, Barbara and I will, you go pay a friendly visit to Southwest Mylum and try to work out some kind of a, what do you call it? A dual serviced area agreement with them. Right. Do, yeah, dual certification, cause it's not in anybody's CCN is the thing. Southwest Mylum's CCN is two hundred feet from their facility or from their line, okay? And, um, that doesn't go very far. And I know this is not to scale, but it doesn't cover the entirety of the property. And so, uh, we would try to coordinate with Southwest Mylum, you know, hey, uh, this is outside of your CCN. We're gonna extend our utility, so this will be in our CCN. We can provide water and sewer so we can meet the needs of any users out there. Uh, Southwest Mylum has a fairly much higher, uh, connection cost that we would not charge anybody out there.
Where are electricity and gas?
Uh, inside the city, uh, going back towards the west. Encore said they could, and this is about, probably about six, seven months ago, they said they could handle anybody who needs twenty megawatts, twenty, twenty-five megawatts, which is still a lot of power. So, um, so that's another thing to, that we have to, you know, bear in mind is, you know, power usage.
The site is good for, they're, they're good to provide the site with twenty megawatts?
That's right. All they'd have to do is just drag the lines over, drop some transformers and then it's there. Gas, uh, don't know about gas, but, uh, the Atmos guy said, yeah, we were talking about that. Uh, the Atmos guy said that, uh, large quantities of gas can be delivered out there. So, uh, like I said, next step is gonna be, we're working on kind of the, the final touches of this industrial district agreement. And the way that not the city's attorney, 4J's attorney has, uh, has this currently as a draft is it's a three-party agreement between 4J, the city and the MDD cause the condition or the terms of this MOU are, are folded in. So as I see it, moving forward, uh, we'll get kind of the, uh, final negotiated draft done as, 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 you know, like Barbara and I and 4J are happy with. And then we'll send it on to the city's attorney, get her to look it over, bless that. And then once that happens, uh, we'll send it to y'all for, for approval.
So the, the 4J would have ultimate say what, what comes and goes out there?
Ultimately, as the developer, yes.
And 4J, do they have any kind of, I'm being devil's advocate here. We get Lightsaber in the first little green area right there and we run utilities all over there and this is all great and he's saying, well, you know what, now I don't wanna sell the rest of this property. Thanks for the utilities.
Well, that situat- that scenario is kinda hard to unpack. So the way that we have this MOU structured, and again, you can read it at your leisure.
Good luck.
It's short. It's easy. I promise. Um, so.
And I, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be negative, but I have recently heard of a similar situation happening in town kinda like that with a, a tenant doing that to somebody.
Oh, okay.
And I'm just thinking, hmm, okay.
Okay. So, um, let me kinda answer your question with a little more information and then we'll jump to that. So, um, we get these two conditions met. All the, all this other stuff gets done. We get design, we get the bores, and now we're waiting on our first tenant. And let's just say Lightsaber announces at, around Christmas that they're, they're choosing Rockdale. Light Sa- Project Lightsaber gives us a Christmas present. Okay. What I would do whenever we got that initial commitment is, okay, well, I'm gonna go run out and I'm gonna secure financing and it's gonna be to the tune of about four point one or so million dollars to drag all this infrastructure to the site, to the property line. And we'll build a little bit of stub road right there and, and then we'll call that done. So that's the water tower, lift station, pipes, bores, all that. Well, the bores will be done. All that's four million dollars, gets infrastructure to the property line. The terms of that MOU say it's gonna be 4J's responsibility to drag the water line, say from the water tower down to where Project Lightsaber's front door is. So that's, he's gonna be out a little bit of cost on that. 4J's gonna have to drop a, uh, sewer service line, a sewer, drop a sewer main from, uh, you know, right through here down to that lift station. So he's gonna be out a little bit of money to connect to that. Depending on how the road stuff goes, uh, he's gonna, he may have to extend the road or build in a back road or something like that just to get this guy, uh, his stuff. So, can that situation ever happen? Sure. But I think the way that we have structured this is that 4J is gonna be out some money. So it's going to be in their interest to recoup their investment and to make some more money. At least that's what my naive thinking says.
I got two questions. First one, these are all for sale, not ground leases, right?
Well, they can be leases, yes.
Number two, I'm like, let him play devil's advocate. Nothing's a problem until it's a problem. Jay's a great guy. What if he gets divorced? What if he passes away? What if they just say, I don't wanna develop the rest of it? I mean, cause he, does there anything in there to hold his feet to the fire? Says, you have to sell this. You have to develop. I mean.
There's nothing in, in.
Do we have any control on, I know about the price. I got that. They can only, gotta cap it.
Right.
What about, but you gotta sell it. You know, any tenants in there?
Um. Right, yeah, so.
Or who, I mean, I mean, just saying what.
Well, I mean, wha- what if 4J declares bankruptcy and they're, they're completely gone? And how is this disposed of in bankruptcy court? Yeah, that's a great question and I do not have an answer for you on that one.
I think it's worthy of asking, asking the question because, yeah, like, yeah, we run all these utilities over there and something happens, uh, and then we're just out. We have no avenue to recoup.
Right.
I mean, hope that that never happens.
True.
But.
No, that, that's a really good point and I'll, uh, send their attorney a, a note in the morning just to. No, that, that's a really good point. And I'll uh, send their attorney a, a note in the morning just to say, hey, can we, can we throw some language in there that if, cause I mean, the city's not going anywhere. I mean, realistically not, but.
Maybe some language that hypothetically, I know it's way more, but the utilities cost the city a million dollars. That if it's not developed or something happens, that we recoup that money somehow?
Well, didn't we, didn't we put some kind of restrict or um, parameters on the developer out for the industrial park to be sold, that you have to do this, 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 and this? To spur them along from keeping them from buying this land and this sitting on it and then
Yeah.
not developing it. I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to tie their hands.
Right, right.
I also don't want to have an outlay uh, of capital from the MDD or the city.
Mm-hmm.
That.
And then it just sits there.
And it just sits.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I understand. I'll, I'll see what, what, what kind of language we can put in there. Uh, what language they're comfortable with and what language we're going to be comfortable with. Um, that frankly was just a scenario, hadn't even thought about. Okay. All right. Well, if y'all don't have any more questions, we'll try to talk now about downtown stuff. The real show.
All right, let me read it off.
Oh, yeah, sure.
All right, item, uh, six B, conduct a workshop regarding the downtown East Cameron reinvestment zone, TERS.
All right. So this also is in your packet. Uh, there's no attachments or exhibits um, for, for this stuff. So uh, this is basically the same presentation that we gave the P and Z a couple of weeks ago. Uh, so you just, you, you're going to get the same one. So if y'all will remember, it's been about six months now. But um, the MDD did this big East Cameron Avenue corridor vision plan thing. And we have the final plan presentation last November. And um, I'm not going to get into the specifics of that plan, uh, cause that, that doesn't really have anything to do with what we're talking about today. But one of the um, suggestions that did come out of that plan was that we need to set aside some kind of dedicated funding stream to pay for improvements along the corridor. Whatever those improvements may be, we need to find some money. Otherwise, we're moving at the speed of money and that's pretty slow sometimes. So today we're going to talk about.
Never heard that. I like it.
So um, I would propose, I would suggest that a, a good tool to get that money is uh, something called a tax increment reinvestment zone. I would also like to remind you guys, and I know you especially are new, um, yeah, the rest of y'all were on council.
Wasn't it too? We had a.
I'm sorry?
Do we have a T R Z out there?
We do. That, that's what I was going to say is we, the city's already created the TERS at the new subdivision. So we're going to kind of go by real fast on what a TERS is and then we're going to uh, get to the application. So what is a TERS? Well, it's a way to fund improvements in a quote unquote blighted area. And that's just what the law says. That's not necessarily a statement of actuality or fact. Where the taxes generated, the extra taxes generated in this area kind of get re-diverted and they pay for improvements into the area. So it's basically, you get some extra tax money. It swoops aside and it pays for further improvements and then it just builds on itself. So I'll, you know, picture says a thousand words. We'll just kind of start with this. The uh, the first concept that you really need to understand to understand the rest of this is this notion of the increment. So that's a technical word. But basically, let's say that you have a piece of property. Um, size is irrelevant, but let's just say it's worth a thou- a hundred thousand dollars. Well, right now it's just, it's just vacant land. Nothing there. It's a cow pasture. Well, if this uh, property becomes a TERS, a tax increment reinvestment zone, uh, that base value, that hundred thousand dollars is locked in. And that's this. The city continues to get the base value, so that never changes. The city never loses anything off of this hundred thousand dollars. Well, out of this particular property, let's say that a, a bowling alley and a movie theater and a part, couple of apartment complexes and a mall and all this other stuff um, starts to get built onto this property. Well, now that there are improvements to the property, the value goes up. And so the city is going to levy taxes on all of that value. And so the extra value, that's the increment, they're still going to pay taxes on that. So that's the levy earned off the increment. And that's this green triangle right here. And so for this chart, um, the X-axis here represents time. And then the Y-axis here represents assessed value. And so right now over here, we just have a vacant piece of property. And as the property develops, uh, this uh, green triangle gets bigger and bigger and bigger. And so this uh, increment, sorry, the taxes levied off this increment, you know, get funneled back into the district and it's all good. At the end of the TIF or the TERS, because these do have an expiration date, unlike the industrial district, this does end. At that point, the city gets all of, gets, gets all of it. The base value plus whatever the increment is. So this is a good point, time to stop and see if there's any questions about this concept. Lynn? Okay.
I got a question. If there's an abatement that happens
Uh-huh.
in the green, during the green.
Mm-hmm.
Does that affect the base?
No.
Does the abatement happen to the, to the base or just to the green?
Actually, an abatement and a TERS are mutually exclusive. You're not supposed to have both. You can have an, an abatement somewhere or you can have a TERS somewhere. It becomes very difficult to do. And I would not suggest it, to do an, an abatement within a TERS. Right.
X minus Y minus A.
Right. Okay. All right, so under what conditions can you create a TERS? Well, basically it needs to be a blighted area where the conditions on the ground negatively affect the future development of the city. And I'll save y'all all this, but let's just suffice to say the way downtown and the East Cameron corridor are right now, it would make an excellent TERS candidate. Okay. So what can a TERS do? Well, uh, like we said, you use the levy from the increment to fund different improvements. So uh, section three eleven of the tax code kind of spells out these project costs and what you can do. So this is a, just a sample of that. But uh, public infrastructure improvements, you know, things like streets, sidewalks, parks, drainage, uh, water sewer lines, other utilities, things of that nature, uh, that can be a, a project. Property acquisition, if some extra property needs to be bought for something, you know, whether that's right of way, a park or whatever, you can do that with a TERS. Structured demo and removal. If there's some dilapidated houses within a TERS, you can pay to get those removed. Financing costs, so that's either borrowing costs, uh, if, if this is going to take on debt or uh, bar- I'm sorry, I said borrowing cost or interest uh, to, to cover a debt. Professional service costs, you know, things like architects, engineers, planners, other professionals that you may need. And then lastly, administrative costs. A portion of the increment levy can come back to the city to pay for overheads. So whether it's Barbara's time, Roxanne's time, Shannon's time, my time, a portion of that can go back to the city. Um, and here's a little more detail, but we're not going to get into that. So now let's, now that we kind of understand TERS, TERSes, uh, let's kind of get into this proposed concept of a downtown East Cameron TERS. I don't know how well y'all can see this, especially back there with the light. Uh, but here's a Google Earth shot of um, East Rockdale. And so we have downtown right here. Oh, thank you Gerald. And uh, so, so we have down, most of downtown right here. And then this is uh, highway seventy-nine, Cameron Avenue. And uh, this goes back to Belton, picks up Los Robles and then comes back down. So um, I know this kind of looks like some gerrymandered congressional district. I was trying to follow property lines. And to try to get it as big as, as uh, we could, to try to get in uh, as much value as possible. So maybe there was a little gerrymandering, but it wasn't much, I promise.
Where does it end? Right there on the um, no, go on the um.
West side?
South side, north side?
South side.
Uh, yeah, it just, it doesn't go all the way from.
Where's that endpoint right there?
Right here? Um.
Is that seventy-nine, is that?
No, I think this is the, so this is the tire shop and then this is the um, yes.
So why did you pick that endpoint for that side?
Frankly, uh, this is me gerrymandering. You get a lot of small tracks that don't have a lot of value through there.
Lot of houses in there.
Lot of little houses, um.
Also that big track where the um, propane place used to be.
About uh, the old slusher property?
Thrashers.
Thrashers, thank you. Yeah, right now there's, yeah, that's right there.
But I mean, that would be a future commercial development site, so.
Could be. Um, li- like I said, I was, I was trying to look for those properties that could, you know, add value without a, a lot of extra costs. If y'all think, you know, we need to, you know, take everything from um, the highway back to the railroad. I mean, that's easy to do that, if, if that's what y'all would like.
Does it affect initial uh, landowner? Would they have a pushback? I mean, why would they push back? I mean, that's not.
It, it's not going to affect their total tax bill.
Well.
So it doesn't add another tax on to the current landowner?
Exactly. A PID, which we did with the subdivision, does that.
This one doesn't. The bag can go up, they're going to pay it anyway. It doesn't matter. It just takes that money that's going up and it comes back into the system.
Right. Yeah, it, it goes into a different pot of money. Right. So instead.
Takes the delta from, from what it grew.
And goes back into a kitty.
Goes into the kitty for improvements into that.
That's right.
So it's not, so for instance, a school bond just passed, so that's another added tax on top of everything. That won't be this case?
Mm-mm. No.
So it's going to go up no matter what? It's just where the money's going to?
Right. So when they pay their tax bill, well, even before that, when the city sets the tax rate at whatever it's going to set it at, property owner in the TERS is still going to get the same bill that they normally would. And so they're still going to pay the city taxes, whatever that is. Most of the work is done on the back end. I've managed a TERS in center. And uh, there was a little bit of work on the back end that, that we had to do and it was all internal. So the property owners are not going to get an extra TERS tax.
What if a property is half in a TERS and half?
I tried.
That, that, that big piece of property right there, that's Los Robles, I think it comes all the way to the highway, doesn't it?
Yeah, it, it does. Uh, it goes from Belton. Yeah, and it is a very large track. I tried to do this as close to the actual property boundaries as possible. And whenever we, if, if y'all decide to move forward with this and we actually do it, excuse me, you know, we're going to follow property IDs. And uh, so, and instead.
No, I was talking about the one to the left of Los Robles.
Yeah.
Oh, over here.
Keep on going, keep on going, keep, no, you're, 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 come down, come down.
Down.
Go your left, go your left.
Go up and left.
Go to the left.
Right there.
Oh, right there?
That one that goes down and joins the highway, I think that's your.
Yeah, come all the way.
Oh, right, yeah.
It's all one pasture, I think.
Uh, you know, I think that's actually two tracks.
Is it?
I guess two tracks, one owner. He probably considers it one. That's where I'm, that's one of the pieces probably I looked at at one time, tried to buy.
Right.
Cause it had access from both. So would, would that adversely affect that person?
Shouldn't, it, it would only affect that track right there. It wouldn't affect this. I mean, that's how we would instruct the appraisal district to count it. Now, whether or not they do it, that's a different thing, but, but it's, I mean, and again.
It doesn't affect the, the property at all. It affects how the appraisal district values the piece that's in the TERS versus the piece out of the TERS.
Well, it's not even that. The appraisal should not go up because it is in a TERS. Okay.
But they got a value. If, if, if he develops that piece of property, part of it
Oh.
is subject to come into the TERS and part of it is not subject to come into the TERS.
That, that sounds like that would be correct. Um, now, if someone were to subdivide a property, like, like say um, Los Robles, for instance, well, no. Anyway, i- if someone was going to subdivide a, a piece of property and half of it was going to be in and half was going to be out, that, we may have to juggle that a little bit. But I mean, basically, I'll, I'll get into the weeds a little bit. Whenever I would do our TERS, uh, we would get the tax roll from the appraisal district. There is a very small number that you have to weed through and it says increment value. You know, for TERS one, which is the subdivision is, and then this would say TERS number two. And then the city plugs that into the tax rate calculation and it does whatever it does. And at the end of the day, whenever it's January, February, after the city starts getting their uh, tax checks in from the tax assessor, you would take that number of, of the increment that the appraisal district gives us. You look at it, uh, like Roxanne would calculate the tax rate and all, you know, come up with that and then basically would invoice. The TERS would invoice the city for the money, then they slide the money over and then that transaction's complete. So I'm sorry, that really got into the weeds for y'all.
Who manages the TERS?
The city. Well, I mean, you could contract that out, but then you're paying an extra person to, you know, manage the TERS for you. There is a couple of consultants that I know that can do this, but it comes with a cost.
Right, but it also comes with the cost for the city to do it too. Cause then the TERS pays them.
It's not that big a deal. It normally, it's not that hard.
To manage the, the TERS?
Mm-hmm.
For the, for the governing?
It's, y'all set a point of board.
Right.
And they, they determine what happens with that?
Mm-hmm.
That delta of money?
That's right.
But it has to be reinvested in that area.
Right.
I think I'm with um, Councilman Walker where because that's seventy-nine, I don't see why we wouldn't go ahead and add that other track there. All the way straight, cause that. I mean, that we have potential to invest in that too, if you wanted to.
Okay.
Not that you have to. I know we're still in the beginnings, but just.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This might be the same question again. I keep, I know y'all send the area, so it goes back in that area. It has to be spent, whatever guidelines there are, it has to be sent, spent there.
Right, right.
Like, as me said.
That's the good part.
I would like to see it extended because we couldn't reinvest in that zone if it's not. And that zone needs some help and that's our main corridor into town.
Right. That, and hey, that's, that's easy to, easy to draw that. Not, not a problem. Um, but generally speaking, this is the project area. Uh, we can go back and color this in. Um, I counted this out, uh, and yeah, I know this is a big piece of property. Um, and if something may happen one of these days, but you know, there's like z- next to zero value there because he's getting an ag exemption. So it, there, there, it was almost like not worth it. But you can always go back and readjust the district uh, boundaries la- later if uh, you know, if, you know, five years from now, something happens and, and you do want to change something. Uh, I'm going to come back to this for a second. This is just a little financial model to kind of show how, money-wise, how this could work. But I want to get to this, uh, cause I think y'all have some fun with that.
You said something, I'm, I'm, I'm getting the weeds.
I didn't say anything.
I'm getting the weeds with you.
Yeah.
So that being ag exemption, that means basically it's locked in at nothing right now. So if you did do it right now, it's locked in low.
Mm-hmm.
Somebody comes along and develops that, then that means it's a lot more going in the kitty. Cause if the increment amount was so low.
Ah, see, there you go. You were listening.
That answers your question.
Good job. Um, so I put together a list of suggestions for what could be done in downtown and kind of what could be done along the highway. This is by no means an exhaustive list or that this is Jim's saying that y'all ought to do this. This is just simply some ideas to. This is just simply some ideas to get you to, to thinking. Um, but downtown, uh, you know, everything from banners, buy some more decorative light poles, uh, get some decorative street signs, holiday lights, uh, some enhanced landscaping and landscaping maintenance. Um, like the, do the lights on the building, uh, sidewalk maintenance, some, and some art. Really, all of that stuff on that list, uh, represents placemaking. And I'll let Barbara tell you about placemaking, cause that's more of a planner thing. But it's just, uh, different things that you can do to make an area, a particular place a little more attractive where people want to, to, to go. Does that sound about right?
And give it a sense of identity.
Yeah.
So I have a question. Say somebody wants holiday lights.
Okay.
Do they then petition the council, and the council has to approve it, and the money comes from the TIRS? Or how does that work?
Well, um, as I envision this, um, and, and you know, that, that actually is a good question. I, I don't think we, uh, really addressed it here. The process for this is, if, if y'all are okay with moving forward with a TIRS, I'll work with the city, we'll put together what's called a project and financing plan. And that kind of says, here's what we're wanting to do, here's about how much we think we're going to get, and here's how we're going to finance it. The council has to create a TIRS board. And so it, yeah, it's this TIRS board that's going to manage how the money is spent in the TIRS. So if someone comes to the TIRS board and says, hey, we wanna do, golly, it'd be nice if y'all did more holiday lights, it would be entirely up to the TIRS board to approve that or not. So, so the, so there is oversight with the TIRS board. And I would even submit to you that every year, the TIRS board needs to do their budget before the council, the, before the city does their budget, so that the TIRS budget gets put in with y'all's budget, and then you approve that budget as well.
Right, and, uh, Jim, I know, uh, I think Kathy and I were on that committee, that East Vision Committee.
That's right, y'all were.
And that's, it seems like what we spoke about there for weeks on end. It's kind of what you have here, which was from a group of, uh, citizens as well.
Right, right. Yeah, I know that East Cameron plan, you know, on the column there to, uh, my right, you know, that, that plan had a lot of, you know, sidewalks, decorative lighting, banners, landscaping, stuff like that. Um, I added a couple of other things, and, and, you know, the, the, doing something at Bridge Park and some greenbelt trails.
Bridge Park was a big part.
Right. Uh, so you, you could do all that stuff with a TIRS. I added, uh, doing something with the electrical lines on Highway seventy-nine and getting rid of that aerial clutter. Uh, I know that would be expensive. At some point, you could do that. Um, let's see, what else? Yeah, kinda bad.
There's, um, what, what's the life expectancy of a TIRS?
About twenty years, twenty-five years. They can be extended if you need them to.
Good job. I know you had some planners come in, and I think one of the first things they had you recommend is that we have a TIRS and then come up with a plan, so good job on following through.
Oh, yeah. Uh, let's see. Let's hop back here for a second and talk about money. So out of that, uh, drawing, there's approximately two hundred and twenty-eight properties. So there's a lot of properties in there. The total value is a little under fifteen million dollars, which is, is about five point one percent of the city's total, uh, taxable value. And so this model down here assumes a five percent delinquency, you know, we'll get a ninety-five percent collection rate. So year one, so this would be like next, next year, uh, let's just say that we get a seven percent increment. Um, I think this is conservative because we know appraisals jumped this year, and we keep hearing that in next year, they're gonna jump even more.
I'm not done with the appraisal board yet.
I'm sorry?
I said, we're not done with the appraisal board yet.
Um, well, fingers crossed, but, um, yeah, yeah, seven percent may very well be a conservative estimate for the increment. Uh, maybe it is, maybe it's not. We'll go with it. Um, so the increment amount would be a little over a million dollars. I'm kind of projecting a, a declining, uh, tax rate for the city. Uh, it may be something different than that, uh, but, you know, we kind of gotta shoot for something. And so the increment levy at ninety-five percent comes out to be whatever's in this column. I, I ran this out for five years with a, a cumulative increment. And so after five years, it'd be about ninety-four thousand dollars, give or take. Um, so, you know, right now, less than eight thousand dollars doesn't get you very far. But after five years or whatever, now we're starting to talk some real money. There, and then there's a couple of other different ways to, to proceed with this. A lot of TIRSes, TIRSes take on debt, and so they get this large amount of cash upfront, and then they start making these improvements, but they structure their debt in a conservative way that they can cover the debt. So just a concept, not saying we have to do this or that we will do this, but let's just say we borrowed two hundred thousand dollars out of the TIRS, and it was a ten-year, twelve-year note or whatever. Well, we could probably cover that, uh, conservatively. And, uh, now we're talking about two hundred thousand dollars of improvements.
But you're also saying, that's low because you're saying that means there's not gonna be any development. That means like a status quo.
That's just.
Right, that's just nothing, no buildings changed, nobody adds anything. If they do come and start adding things, then that's gonna jump quite a bit then.
Right.
Take a little house that's valued at fifty thousand right now, and they put up a big nice building there, now it's two hundred thousand.
Right.
It does go up quite a bit.
Which is why I think this year is the key year to do it. Um, there have been a couple of properties, even in downtown, that have sold. So something, and, and I know of one, I can't really tell you which one it is right now, uh, but there's somebody looking very hard and heavy at another downtown building. It's not the MDD building, but, uh, I think if it's works out, y'all will be really, really happy with it. Um, so I think that value from downtown should go quite a bit higher in the, in the short term. As far as stuff out, uh, going down East Cameron, uh, yeah, I don't know.
I have a question for you, Jim, again.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Um, can you remind me, I know when we spoke at these meetings, uh, they had recommended that if we did designate this area, or had an area as a reinvestment zone, that we would be more likely to get grants and things like that from the state and from the federal government because we have a reinvestment zone. Is that correct?
Uh, I think there's some, there, there's a little bit of truth to that.
Right.
Some of the grants that we've seen come out here lately ask more for a very particular plan. So like on the sidewalk stuff. So, uh, we've seen a couple of these, uh, like, uh, you know, federal grant opportunities that have come down, and they, they wanna know, okay, what's your plan for a sidewalk? Almost like they, I, I don't know how you read it, but I almost kind of read it like they want you to have construction documents ready to go, or at least some kind of very advanced plan other than, yeah, you see that patch of bare grass right there? Yeah, that's our sidewalk.
Almost shovel-ready.
Yeah.
Is the term that they use.
So yes and no. I think forming a TIRS would show that we're putting forth local effort?
Gotcha. Thank you.
Well. All right, so we are talking about that. So next steps is, um, so the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, and they embraced this concept, and they wanted, uh, us to have this conversation with the council. So, so they like this idea. Uh, I, I hope I'm speaking for them accurately when I say that. Uh, now we're at bullet point number two, uh, having a council workshop for some kind of guidance. If y'all are okay with this, the next step beyond this would be y'all authorizing staff to create this project and financing plan, and then we go through the steps of creating the TIRS. So at that point, that's the end. Oh, well, actually, I do have a couple of final thoughts, and then I really will stop. So, um, I don't think any of y'all were present for, Barbara, you were there, uh, when we had this site selector, uh, come in to, to Rockdale back in, um, March. And, um, frankly, he said, uh, Rockdale doesn't show very well. Uh, there's, there's a lot of, um, stuff in downtown and along East Cameron that's gonna scare investors away. And I've had a couple of conversations. One, uh, comes to mind in particular where the guy said, you know, y'all got a great spot, love what y'all are doing, your town looks awful, and I'm not investing here. And, you know, it's kind of hard to hear that, but you gotta hear it. Stuff like this starts to turn the ship very slowly. Doing an industrial park and getting some industrial product activated starts to turn the ship. And so both of these things individually are not going to be the end-all, save-all, but it starts to turn the ship. Right now, we're kind of on this path, and I think, I, I'm, I think I can say this correctly, that y'all want to go down a different path, and we have to start to do these things to start to turn the ship. And I found something cool. This is the USS Rockdale. Yes, this was an old wor- Do I?
Yeah, you photoshopped that.
No, I did not. Um, AK two oh eight. This was a, this was a old, uh, World War Two cargo ship, saw action in the Pacific, and, uh, so we gotta turn the ship. All right.
I have that. Good job, Jim. Thank you.
All right. Do I?
Meeting is adjourned.
Good stuff, Jim, thanks.
Good job.
Well, we need that direction from y'all. If y'all wanna move forward with this.
I think we do, do we need to tell tonight about, I'm like, Esme, maybe some other people here, I think it needs to be taking that other property if you can as well. Do you need to know that tonight, or is that something y'all go ahead and do and bring back to us?
I mean, yeah, we have to bring the project and financing plan back.
Cause if it doesn't affect the people at all on the taxes, I mean, why not go ahead and draw it across, right, the best you can? So.
So just need to know if y'all kind of wanna advance this, and.
We need to vote on it?
No.
Not out of a workshop.
Yeah.
But I think head nods are good.
Yeah.
Yeah, head nod, yeah, yes.
That was always your great job, though. Thanks a lot.
Good job. Thank you.
All right. Thank y'all.
All right.
Meeting is adjourned.
Which way is the ship turning?